The Minnesota Building Committee. I just want to say thank you for coming out tonight. It's January, it's dark early. You get home, it's hard to come back out in the middle of the winter, but thank you. So, there are, I did say there are three handouts in the back. If you, if you didn't grab them, grab them. The three handouts include what our committee charge was right from the beginning that was approved by the Board of Selectmen on September 2nd, 2015, and ultimately a town meeting on September 21st. This is the charge of our committee. There is a, we provided the capital, potential capital improvements mailer. This mailer was sent back for a town meeting on June 14th, June 4th, 2015, that had all of the information on the four large capital projects that were approved at town meeting and ultimately a referendum. So this explains some of the taxing and the tenure capital plan and, and capital management plan that the town has and that was put in place. So we printed that out for people. And then the last one is just kind of mishmash, but it has some renderings of what the proposed front is, the site plan, the floor layout, and then some contact information and the construction schedule. So tonight, the agenda for tonight's meeting. I'll give you an introduction to the committee and our professional staff. We'll discuss the committee's charge a little bit more in depth. We'll present what the committee's work has been to date. We will present an overview of the site plan and the building committee with Silver Petroselli, the environmental abatement process. Fussin' O'Neil will cover it. And then site logistics plan, budget, construction timeline, timelines will be covered by Downs Construction. And then we'll talk about the funding expense over the state. And then we will have a question and answer period. So I would just ask that you hold all your questions till the end, once we've presented everything, and everyone will have an opportunity to ask a question. So, this is our, our committee. We have our regular members who are all here tonight. Dan Alexander is our alternate member who is not here tonight. Our advisory members to our committee based on the charge. The facilities director, the land use director, finance director, and Board of Ed all have representatives on our committee as advisory members to the committee to help us through the process. And they are all here tonight also. And then Ruth is our recording secretary. Our professional service staff, such consultants, Silver Petroselli. David is here from Silver Petroselli. Paul and Amanda are not here. They're working on the project with him. From Downs, we have Paul, Tombs, and Scott over there, they're working on the project. And Jared's here from Fussin' O'Neil on the end of the table, he'll talk. And then the BSC group who is not here tonight, but they are the group that we are using for the well project and some of the other site plan work. So, I know you can't read this. I guarantee it, but you do have a copy of this. This is what we put out for the committee's charge. So, just to cover some highlights of our charge, our committee was, was charged with the design, the demolition, and renovation and repair of the old middle school, the former Haraway Middle School. And we were charged with demolition of approximately eighteen thousand three hundred square feet, which was the ray portion of the building. You know, we were charged with the renovation of and the repair of the classrooms, the office space, everything within the building that we're keeping to make usable space as a town office. And that included the renovations of the gym to where it's usable space by Park and Rec, and also to be our town's permanent voting location. We were also charged with the installation of a vault for the town clerk to bring us up to the standards required by the Secretary of the State. Any and all handicap accessibility code compliance work that needed to happen, hazardous materials and abatement process that needed to happen within the school. And then, as with any building, as you renovate it or build it, looking at all the electrical, mechanical plumbing, lighting, HVAC systems. Those were all part of our charge. We were also charged with creating a standalone garage that would house the police department's vehicles and other municipal vehicles and equipment. And then the overall site plan and the site improvements that need to happen. So, there are, that's kind of the highlights of it. Again, you guys have in your hand the copy of the entire charge. It lists a little bit more in detail, but if you have questions at the end after you read it, you can go through that too. So, just to talk a little bit about the progress of our committee to date. So, our committee started meeting in October of 2015, so we've been meeting just a little bit over a year. We, to date, have retained Silver Petroselli as our architect of record for the project. So, Silver came to us with past experience on the project because they worked for the prior two, prior building committee and the advisory group. So, you know, David and his group were able to bring a lot of that past history to us, so it made us have the ability to move forward a little bit quicker on the project. We completed a USDA application and approval process for hiring a construction manager for the project. So USDA, who we are planning to use for the funding for this project. It's a loan from USDA for fifteen million dollars, which is currently locked in at a rate of three point six, seven, two, five?
Three point six two five.
Three point six two five. So, that rate is locked. It can only go lower for us based on when we take that money from USDA. So, however, with using USDA becomes a lot of requirements for us as a committee that we need to meet. So, they require us to put all of our contracts in front of them, even though they're approved by our town attorney. They, it requires us to put all of our contracts that we go out to hire, Fussin' O'Neil, our contract with Downs, our Silver Petroselli contract, all of those have to go to them and be approved. They have to approve our plans before we can go out to bid. They will be involved in the bid process to some extent and oversee the total cost of the project. So, we have, there is an oversight from USDA because we are using their funding, which has the potential, and Paul will talk a little bit about it in his schedule when he talks about it, it clearly has the potential to extend our schedule out. Our committee is very driven towards, towards an end date that we feel very confident that we can meet along with Silver Petroselli and Downs. However, there is a kink in that, and that is USDA and how quickly they approve things for us and how quickly we can move the process forward. We, so after getting the approval from USDA to go ahead with a construction manager risk, we created an RFP and an RFQ that we put out for construction firms to come and bid on the process or apply to work on the process with us. So, we had nine, nine bids come back for that. We ultimately shortlisted it down to four companies, and we interviewed all four of those companies and ultimately shortlisted it again down to two, which was Downs and Newfield Construction. We went back and interviewed those two again and ultimately chose Downs. So, that process, as simple as it is to put in one line on a piece of paper, it took us quite a bit of time to, to get that done. And, and we felt that this was probably one of, besides choosing Silver Petroselli, this was one of the most important decisions that we as a committee had to make. You know, Downs is our, our eyes and ears on the job. They are our driving force. They are our consultant to help us look at costs, do value engineering, provide us guidance on the whole entire project. So, we as a committee were very, very comfortable ultimately with our decision with Downs and to move forward with them. We went out and we completed a space needs survey, and we held meetings along with Silver Petroselli with every town department that will be in this building, from the Board of Ed to finance, planning, zoning, everyone had, or land use. Everyone had the opportunity to come to the committee, provide us their space needs, justify their space needs and why they needed that space, talk about their number of employees, give us a little bit of an idea of what you have today and what your, if there is in your department any expected growth, so that we weren't shoehorning departments into a spot that was never going to give us the ability to grow. So, we took all of that information, the committee reviewed it, there was a subcommittee set up to review that that was run by Eric Dill. And that information was taken and ultimately compiled. And we then went back, we came up with some plans that we put out, back out to the groups for review, every one of those departments for review. The Board of Ed came back to us and said, hey, we like the amount of space that you've given us, we appreciate it, we just don't believe the way the layout is, is functional for us. So, the committee went back and we reviewed that, and we were able to actually rework the programming within the building and come up with a, an agreed upon functional layout for all of the departments. Every department in the building has seen this layout, had the opportunity, we held a meeting where every town department was invited to come comment on it, and several did, but they've all come to it and had the, they've all seen it and had the opportunity to comment back on it. So, after that meeting, we went back, David made some changes with his group, and ultimately our committee approved a facilities building layout program that you'll see tonight. You actually have a copy of that on the second page of what you have there, the color renderings. We retained Fussin' O'Neil. Fussin' O'Neil had done some studies for us in the past on this site with past building committees, so they had the knowledge behind it, but we've had Jared Smith stay on, and his company has continued to work with us. We now, again, are in the process of taking their work and, or their contract and getting it approved by USDA, so that we can have them on, on board with us to be able to help with the demolition phase, which we'll talk about later, and Jared will talk about the stuff that they've done to date. We've received approval from P&amp;Z. We went to them. David and his group took the plans to planning and zoning, and they've approved it. So, that's, that's a done deal. We've received DOT approval on the new entrance into the site, so that's been completed. We also are, as a group, very committed to preserving the murals. So, we, that was actually one of the largest items that we talked about as part of the RFP, RFQ interviews with groups. And Downs came in, and one of the reasons I think ultimately I'll speak for the committee, one of the big drivers, I think, for the reason we selected them was because how prepared they came in to their presentation with suggestions and thoughts, and they had talked to a consulting group already to be prepared to work around and protect those murals for us as part of this project. So, Paul will talk a little bit about that. And we've also started the process for reactivating our existing wells that are in the school. So, we're working with the Department of Public Health. Right now, that building was a school. Those wells have been inactive since 2008, so they're not up to code as of today. So, there are things that we need to do to bring them up to code, and we have to get the state's approval to do that, and it's a very big cost savings, or a substantial cost savings to us to reactivate the wells versus put in new and re-drill new wells and do all that. So, we are working diligently with the state to continue to try and get those wells reactivated. So, that's what we, those are the big things that we've done kind of to date to get us to the point tonight where we sit in front of you to do this presentation. You'll see in the schedule that Paul's going to talk about, we are on a very quick timeline. We hope to have this project done by the end of 2017. That's our goal, and have the town hall moved in. So, we're less than a year away from having this completed if our friends at USDA work with us. So, that's our goal with that. I'm going to turn it over to David, so that he can talk about what Silver does.
Evening, everybody. Again, I'm David Stein. I am the principal with Silver Petroselli and Associates. As Craig's mentioned, and even just talking before, it's been almost ten years since we were invited to the project, and so we've been living this for a long time, so it's actually, it really feels good to be able to be this close, this close to it. So, I'm going to just kind of quickly go through and orient everybody to the project. I'm sure you know the building well, but just in terms of how it's oriented on the plan. So, as you can see from this Google map, which is probably taken sometime in May, I think I saw off of the website, just to give you the orientation of Plains Road that's located here, Wiglam that's located here, you can see the skate park, the tennis courts. We'll talk a bit. Paul's going to show you a site logistic plan and what we're thinking about, how the site's going to look at least during construction, and I'll now show you what it's, what it's going to look when it's ultimately finished. But, when we're talking about the hail portion, the original building that was, that was built, that's really located, located here. Some of you may not be aware, there's actually a flat roof on that portion. You see the slope, there's actually a flat roof, and that's what you see that's located here in the white. What's located here is the gymnasium, and this is the ray portion. So, that's essentially the portion that's going to be removed from the building. And then our property line really bounds right at the road up along that tree line, and then technically it goes all the way back as part of the town property. But our work really sits within this sort of rectangular, rectangular view. So, our proposed site plan, again, orientation, this shows you where the original ray piece was.
The hail.
Yeah, the hail piece was, the ray piece is situated here, gymnasium situated here, and we're adding in a small addition to the building, which is the new town vault and clerk's office that's going to be positioned there. But the site plan in terms of its really site circulation is a big, it's very important to the success of this project. We've spent a lot of time, obviously we've received planning and zoning approval, but some of the problems that we discovered from the beginning was the original bus drop off that was located here. So, this is a state highway, so state DOT was concerned with that, with, with keeping that in place. And essentially, we will be removing that portion and regrading that here. The tennis courts, which will stay, and we'll talk, you'll hear more about it, and the skate park will remain active during construction, and that is, that's going to remain as part of this project. There is money budgeted for some preservation of that, built into the project funding. But we are creating a new entryway because essentially our new entry is here. The monumental entryway is here, and I'll show you more of that with the architecture. But the new entryway is now an accessible entryway with handicap accessible parking located here, and a brand new plaza that's going to bring you into the front of the building. So, really a great improvement, obviously to what you currently have, but to create a brand new street presence. Historically, we're preserving that front of that building, and our new entryway is really downplays that historical entryway because we didn't want to compete with that. We didn't want to over, you know, really over emphasize. And parking, which is located here, along with parking along the back. The outbuilding or Butler Building that's located in the back, I'll show you some images of that. That's intended for the resident state trooper, the police vehicles that's located there, along with some of the town vehicles that will be parked there. Maintenance equipment such as lawn mowers and larger pieces of equipment will all be housed. Currently, some of that is either located up at the existing town hall in the outbuilding or parked outside in some places. So, that's going to be located here. We'll also have our generator, because the building will be served fully by a generator that's located to the rear, rear of the building. From an engineering perspective, there's existing septic that is on that site, so we are tying into. There's actually a few different septic pieces, but we're tying into existing septic. And as Craig mentioned, we're trying, we're going through the process of approval to re-energize the existing wells. New, new pumps and equipment would go through that, but we need to go through the state approval to get that re-energized, and we're working on that at the moment. There are landscaping improvements that are going around the perimeter of the building, so we are enhancing the landscaping, but we're also preserving a lot of the trees and such, so we're not doing, you know, major, major destruction to really any of those mature trees that are located here. And then there's the potential of some overflow parking that's located over here, so if you are having those voting days and you have that large capacity, you know, there is at least some provisions that's built into that. There will be site, there will be new site lighting that's built in, new perimeter building lighting that's built into the design, which is really going to improve and create a safe environment around, around the entire building. There is also a rear entryway for the resident state trooper. There is a rear entryway, and there's various other means of egresses that will remain means of egress out of the gymnasium, means of egress out of some of the lower levels that, that are there, that will be positioned all the way around the building. So, in terms of the floor plan, what you, what you see is the portion of the ray that obviously at this point will be demolished and no longer part of the building, or entryway as I talked about. So, to orient you again, Plains Road, which is located at the bottom of the page, and that new entry drive is located just here to the right of the building. Our new monumental entryway is located here, so that's the public entry. That's the historic piece that still is preserved at that portion of the building. We've created this color code, and I think as, there's handouts for you, maybe you'll be able to see closer to what you have, but I'll walk you through the building. So, entering through here, so this kind of blue area, that really denotes what we call circulation, or essentially it's the hallways, the corridors through that, through the building. And we kept the majority of those hallways sort of intact with its width and its depth from where it was for the school, because it worked, you know, it worked extremely well. So, those bearing walls and such remained intact. So, entering into the building to the right is going to be your tax assessor and tax collector and the vault that's being built here. So, this is the addition portion that sort of tucks in to that part of the building where the ray and hail eventually once met, met together. As, as most of you know, there's various ramps and levels to, to the building, so sometimes it doesn't show up in the overall floor plan. But if we walk in and we begin to head to the left, this just brings us now into really the town hall services. So, we have, as most public facilities, we wanted to make sure that we had enough public room for meetings of this scale, but meetings also of smaller scale. So, what's shown in sort of this beige, this brown color is a larger meeting room here, a big, more monumental town hall meeting. That this line down the middle, what it really illustrates is a dividing wall, so you could have two meetings or one meeting going on in its place. And there will be furniture and audio/video technology and such, so you could really have a public meeting that works well for a large crowd or a small crowd. Coming down, so coming down this hallway, we have the IT department, so really all the brains of the technology is going to be located in this yellow piece that's there. And then we have the fire marshal that's located here, a small meeting group for land use. And all in this blue is the land use. So, you have planning, you have building and so forth, so that's all there. So, coming in as either contractors, or if you're looking to do additions to your house, or you have property transfers, that's all going to be right there, very accessible. And the point, even with the, with the tax collector and assessor, you know, we wanted to make sure that that was sort of your first stop as you go in, because that has a lot of that, especially the collecting part, I'm sure. But, you know, you're already coming from the handicap parking and travel distance is obviously something of a concern, and we didn't want people to really navigate all the way through the building. So, so that was thoughtful in its overall planning. And then as we come through, we do have bathrooms, and those were where the existing bathrooms are. They're being fully renovated, they're going to be handicap accessible, and there's plenty of bathrooms that meet the current code for this type of use and the seventh use within your building. So, as we turn the corner, as I said, this is really that main town hall, called the town hall chambers. We all, we have the selectman's office that's located here, and then we have the finance, finance office that's located here. And you see this corridor in the middle, that connects to that monument, that original historical entryway. We're redoing the front stairs, we're repainting all the nice detail and repairing any of the rotten wood that's in there, and that's where the murals are located, and those murals will be preserved. So, as you come into that, you're going to have that sort of, that all three sides as you walk in with now, with now the selectman's office on one side and the finance on the other. So, it really, it's really going to be framed well. Now, coming into this, there's also, now we have some casework that's in here for town informational meetings, some built-ins for display cases and such, because this really frames the entryway going into, going into the town meeting room. Located in the green is, is the Board of Ed offices. So, it includes the superintendent of schools, the support staff, pupil services, their conference room for their individual meetings, and your support space that goes along with that. This is a, a workroom, which, you know, has copiers and storage of materials and office supplies and such, so that's centrally located for everybody to use. So, a lot of this is all, this plan works around the sharing of uses, the sharing of meeting rooms, the use of the bathrooms. So, you know, this is a communal type of offices, isn't specifically divided territorially. Everybody is sort of working together, and that's how this plan, as you can see, is pretty compact. So, as we continue down to the hallway, at this point, we have the resident state trooper that's located here to the left. There's a separate entryway with a handicap accessible ramp and stairs, and also a weatherlock, but really a secure vestibule. So, there's no need for after hours, if this is being used, to bring anybody through this portion. So, security was an important part of the consideration. The emergency management office is located here, and in case of an emergency, this could essentially become your EOC, because it's that large meeting room. So, it provides you again with that flexibility of use of space. I'm going to kind of then take us all the way back to the front entryway now, and this is where we have ramps that bring us down, you know, about a half a, half a level, and that's the gymnasium. So, the gymnasium in its form and fittest and height stays the same, but we are redoing the lighting and we are redoing the mechanical systems. Across the board, we have a brand new, brand new mechanical system, so there's going to be heating and cooling throughout the entire building. So, there really is no remnants of any of those original systems. We're gugging that in our Phase One piece through the abatement and just the removal of that. So, there is energy efficient systems. They're also zoned in a way for each individual space, so we're not just turning on one big central plant and running it, because this building's going to operate at very different times of the day. Essentially, it's probably going to be occupied from seven in the morning till ten at night at sometimes, but we only want it to be operating when it needs to. So, we've designed a zoning plan and specific units that will reduce your overall energy consumption as opposed to a central boiler plant that really currently exists now within the building. So, bringing us down that hallway, we also have Parks and Rec, which is adjacent to, to the gymnasium, which obviously that makes sense to have that adjacency. And we have the registrar voters, which is also located to the gymnasium. So, now during those voting times, they're really adjacent to that in all of their voting booths, and equipment is going to be stored there, and they have enough room to be able to count ballots and deal with all of the, all the stuff that they deal with during, during any, any type of election piece. And then there's that meeting room that can not only be used by the registrar voters, but also for other, other public use that's located there. We do have an elevator, and we're upgrading the elevator. We're doing really some cosmetic and control upgrade, but the elevator and shaft and such remains in relatively good shape. It's been reviewed and certified by an elevator consultant, and we're doing the cosmetic and other cab upgrades to, to that space. On the lower level of the building, it, it's a little hard to, I'll try to walk you through it. This portion of the building, this portion of the building is essentially its crawl space. It's never been occupied space, and it's going to remain crawl space, unoccupied space. This piece at one time was classrooms there. There was never an elevator there. We are, we are doing- We are, we are doing abatement work and we're doing demolition work, but the intent is not to repurpose that in this plan. We are not, we are not repurposing that in that case. So, so sort of moving on to the other portion of the building, we now get to, if you can envision, you're sort of half the flight down, there actually is an existing entryway, the greenhouse or the remnants of a greenhouse. A portion of the greenhouse exists at the moment here. There will be, that will be sort of that street entryway or that grade level entryway to, to the elevator that will get you up sort of that half-flight. And then you're into the ramp network that could get you up to main level or down to the gymnasium, which you're familiar, familiar with the building. And then the, the old kitchen, which was located here, we are creating a mechanical electrical because we have to bring in new service, electric service and such. Currently, the building has two electric services, so we're, we're pulling that out. There's going to be brand-new electric switchgear and such that's all sort of feeding out of here, goes back to that generator and all those primary and secondary wires and such get brought back through here. And we are, we are doing full demolition and, and going to keep it, with lighting, at least means of egress and all of that, but we're not repurposing this for any intended use other than miscellaneous town storage and such that could be positioned back there. So, so that's the overall plan, the floor plan. So the elevations, this is what you begin to see from, from the street, from Plains Road. You know, the historical entryway that's located here and our new entryway, which is located here. And then the new addition of the building that's positioned here. So zooming in closely, as you all see, you know, we're keeping it. We're renovating it, we're preserving it. We're rebuilding the stairs, we're rebuilding the steps and the brickwork that's going, that's going into that. The addition, the addition, we tried to keep the architecture humble enough that it wasn't trying to compete with the existing, but also have somewhat of a scale, scale to that. So we have brick where we're going to do our best to kind of match the color, intent not to try to do a perfect preservation map, but we're actually, you know, going to get close to that color. Town seal that's located up in this, up in this gable end. And then we obviously do windows and some banding and so forth. That's going to be there to begin to now really create another new entry front look to the building. All four sides of the building, we are doing window replacements. Some of the windows are actually relatively new and in good shape, like some in the front. But there are some along the back that we're clearly removing the gymnasium, some of those upper pieces we're pulling out. We're redoing all the exterior doors, we're doing all the, the majority of those exterior windows along the back. There will be some brick repairs and brick replacement of the nacyonery because those are damaged over time. All of the roofs are being fully replaced. Those are going to be ripped down to its superstructure below and those will be approved upon. And as I mentioned before, new building lighting along with this sight lighting that's going to be located there. The outbuilding, so the outbuilding is a utilitarian structure. It's not an, it's technically not an occupied building. It does not have bathrooms or office rooms or anything. There will be some heat within the building to at least keep the vehicles somewhat to temperature. There will be some water that's brought there to be able to do some type of cleaning of the vehicles. But it's really a storage building, that's what it's intended to do. We were sensitive to the architecture where we, at least we wanted to look at, we were trying to clap the building. We, we looked at this sort of barn red color to look at that. We created some arches at the point. We have some goose neck lighting that's there. We have a, we have a water table, stone base to create a bit of a good structure so when vehicles are there to provide some protection, but just to give a water table to it. And then there's landscaping that's sort of bundled around, around that portion of the building. And this is, this is a floor plan of the building. You can see the number of bays. The police pretty much occupies this portion of the building. And then there's also the other smaller vehicles that could be positioned here. At least it shows you have the flexibility of arranging it in any way, any way that you wish. So with that, I turn it back over to Jared.
Hi everyone, my name is Jared Smith. I'm with Plus One Mail, I'm the project manager for the, for the project. So similar to Silver Petrocelli, as we were initially contracted by Silver Petrocelli to do an inspection of the building. Many of you may know, some of you may not, that this building is actually five different vintages. So when you're doing inspections, occasionally look at them as their own standalone buildings. Doing the inspection, looking for asbestos, obviously, lead-based paint, PCB light ballast, mercury, those are all typical hazardous materials we can find in the building. So 10 years ago, or almost 10 years ago when we originally did the inspection, we focused on those items. As the time moved along, as the project moved along, more environmental issues surfaced as, as part of the industry, not as part of the project, but as part of the industry. So PCBs and building materials really emerged during the, the planning of this project. So that to, to stay on, on top of things and to not let any contractors drive the project, we came back and did a supplemental inspection of PCBs and building materials. And then at that time also did some supplemental asbestos inspection. More recently, we, after redoing all the final demo drawings, came back and did another supplemental inspection just to, you know, now that we know where the demo walls, we can do some exploratory investigation to really determine and try to eliminate any surprises during the building process. Because that's, that's really what we're trying to avoid. Getting all of that information together, reviewing all the project plans, documentation, we developed project specifications for abatement of materials. Completely removed them from the building. More protection for the, for the abating crews, removal of, of storage tanks. So that's all, you know, there's, you know, like Craig said, that's, you know, easy to put in one slide or one line, but you know, this is years and years of work to get to this point. One thing that's not discussed on this slide is mold. So I understand that there is, there's been talk of concerns of mold in the building. I can absolutely say a hundred percent yes, there's mold in the building. But there's also mold in here now, you're breathing it in, there's mold in your homes. Mold's everywhere. So the building has had some water intrusion. Whenever you have water intrusion, you're going to have mold issues. Good news is that the majority of the building, the, where's that? Can you keep that from those slides? Oh, alright, so the original 1923 portion of the building, the hail portion. Primarily wood frame structure, it is plaster. I've been through the building multiple times. There's not any significant moisture damage in that part of the building, which is great because that would be probably the most affected if there was, if there was a water intrusion. The hail portion of the building, the portion that is being demoed, there's roof leaks around that portion of the building. What's that?
The raid part.
Yeah, the raid, I'm sorry. About the raid part. There's water intrusions throughout that portion of the building and it is being demoed, so that's not really a concern. The middle section of the building, which would be like the 1952 vintage, there's water intrusions there too, but that building is primarily built up in previous materials. So you've got concrete blocks, you have vinyl flooring and all that's going to be removed and changed as part of the project. So there is really, you know, yes, there's mold, but is it a concern? Not really. It's going to be addressed during the project. The biggest thing is, in, in dealing with mold is, is finding the source of the moisture. So as David said, or Craig said, I don't remember who, the roof is being replaced on the building. So you're, you're eliminating that, the moisture intrusion into the building. That's, that's the first step. So once we get through that, then you're, then you're dealing with any building materials that were impacted, those are all coming out. And, and as the project progresses, if mold is identified in, you know, the wall cavities, if the wall's open, it, it will be addressed at that time. As far as the mold issue, sure, there's one, but is it, is it a big issue?
Let's get to the right slide and get started. My name's Paul Wiltowitz, project executive with Downs Construction. And I'd like to introduce Scott Scholl, who will be the project manager during construction. And Tom Romanelli, the project executive, will oversee procurement and the construction process. We're going to talk about three different components, the site logistics, the budget and the schedule. But the first thing I want to talk about is local participation. We work together through the procurement process because there's different passes and we're all good at team, team up and get the best we can. We're going to hold a local outreach program somewhere in the next two to three weeks so we can contact all local businesses and make them aware of what's going on at the project and what possible involvement they can have. I mean, we want to make sure that the town of these towns and all the businesses have the first and utmost opportunity to get part of this, be a part of this project. This is site logistics, plan we put together. You see Plains Road, we're going to have a construction access gate off Plains Road that's just an emergency access at this point, at this point in time. The main access is going to be back off the backside part of the site over where Wigwam comes in. We're going to close the entire site with a six-foot post-driven construction fence and leaving parking and access to the skate park and the tennis courts until we have to take over the tennis courts to re, restore those everywhere. Once we, Dave showed you the proposed site plan and once we get a new parking area in, we're going to move the construction entrance gate that's on Plains Road over to this area over here where the new parking lot is going to be. So we'll have two means of access into the site. The budget, I know everyone's concerned about the budget. $15 million was the proposed number. So far, we've done two budgets. Typically, on a project like this, we'll do three. We've done schematic design development and tomorrow we're going to receive the hundred percent or 95, 100% construction documents on which we'll do our final budget. We are right now well within the $15 million overall project budget. There is 10% contingency built for the project at this point in time, which will be reduced as we go forward and do the last budget and go through the bidding process and present N G M P to the building committee and to the USDA for approval. In the process right now, we're creating all the bid packages, getting ready to go out and bid phase one and phase two will be about three to four weeks down the road from now. Schedule, like I said, phase one is going to be going out to bid in the next couple of weeks. We anticipate mobilizing for this site around the middle of February. Phase one is primarily just demolition and abatement. When the demolition abatement contracts are filed, we have to file a notice with the appropriate, appropriate authorities before we can start doing any abatement. During that timeframe, which is approximately 10 days, we're going to go in and we're going to do the protection of the murals. We worked with Richard Canning Associates, who came to the job site and looked for murals and gave us a complete and concise plan of what we had to do to protect the murals in the main entrance. He's also given us a restoration program, which after the construction is getting near completion with the protection, we're going to go do some minor restoration to the, the murals. Phase two, like I mentioned, we get those documents for the construction tomorrow. We're going to do a final budget. We're anticipating phase two going out to bid in the middle of February to somewhere around the middle of March. And mobilizing to start construction on phase two towards the end of March. Now, all these dates are our best guess at what we see. As Craig mentioned, everything is depending on USDA approval. That's out of our control. But if all goes well, we're going to be done with this project right around Thanksgiving and have a lot to see between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
So I'll just talk a little bit about what we've spent the date and how the budget has broken out. Cindy's in back, if I say anything wrong, I'm sure she'll throw something at me. So the total budget for the project was $15 million. The way it was broken out is as we looked at the project was about $1.5 million was estimated to be the demo expense. To do that abatement, do the demo, be all that site stuff shipped off, site, all of the stuff here I talked about that needs to be regulated to get it shipped off, site and dealt with. One of the things here at Slide Show was that we also have three tanks we have to pull out of the ground. So, you know, there's two oil tanks and there's a propane tank that have to be brought out. So that will also be part of the demo plan for us to take those out and to, you know, that we replace as part of the project. $10.5 million was for the construction, the actual construction of the project. So that's the number that we're working towards. And then $3 million of the project was for other costs, basically owner's costs, we'll call them. So, you know, it's everything that the owner has to do from insurance to furniture fixtures, anything that goes into that building that's not part of the construction falls into that $3 million cost. So to date, the only area we've spent in is that $3 million. So we have spent money for our recording secretary Ruth, who's a God-sent to us as a committee, she keeps us in line, so thank you Ruth. Howard and Sage, who is the town attorney, who reviewed, as I said, USDA is not the easiest to work with. He had to take all of the contracts and the AIA documents, they're called, and review them and create them and turn them into documents that USDA approved as well as create several attachments for us that USDA requires. So that not only had to happen for Downs Construction, it had to happen for Silver Petrocelli's documents also. So there was a lot of time spent on that, obviously, as you could see by the dollar amount. And then there's newspaper stuff, there's costs for us to post this meeting, post the RFP, RFQ that went out to the public for hiring Downs and Silver Petrocelli's expenses to date. So they have an overall contract with us, of that contract, we've spent about, I think it's $312,000 with them to get us through the design, the schematic phase, the design phase and now we're moving into the construction phase. So that's what we spent, it's a total of $331,859 to date. So as we move forward, we will take this PowerPoint presentation, it'll get posted on the town website. So when you look at the town website, on the left-hand column when you first bring the website up, there's a place that says meetings and agendas. You can find our committee in that. And I saw Deb walk in, did I not? Deb, you sent me an email something about a link, one of the links did not work. Can you just talk to that?
The website is in need of updating and we are working on that. We've budgeted and we'll be moving forward with that shortly, but it's got limitations with its age. So when we've, all of the existing committees that we had when we started with, they work great, but this one, they don't link together. So if you drop down from the top where it says committees, boards and committees, the old stuff still appears that we had from 2017, 2010. In order to find this committee, it's on the left here. If you have, ever have any trouble finding anything, just call me, I'll find it. Make every effort to get everything up.
So we will continue to post everything we do. Our minutes are up there, our meeting agendas are up there. We do meet the second and fourth Thursday of every month. Those are our normally scheduled meetings, right here at the Green Chaw at 7 o'clock. We encourage public participation if you'd like to come out. You know, our committee has felt very strongly about the more that we can see people involved. There are a lot of rumors that float around on Facebook. Facebook is the evil of this town in my mind, both states, no offense to people who like it, but it clearly puts out misinformation a lot of times. There's a lot of good information that goes out there too, but it really does drive some misinformation. So we would prefer people to come to the source, come to our meetings, come read our agenda, read our minutes, look at what we post up on the website versus what you read on Facebook. And then, so you can always contact the first selectman's office or you can contact myself. And in your handouts, both those, all of that contact information is in the handout that you got. So- So. So, a couple of things. Thank you for coming out tonight again, and thank you to the folks that presented, David, Jared, Paul, Woodstock. We will do a question, question and answer now at this point. Just some ground rules around question and answer. We'd ask that you hold your questions to two questions to start, so everybody gets an opportunity to go through. And if we have time at the end, we'll go back to folks that have more than two questions. Just a reminder, our committee, you have the charge of our committee in your hand. Our committee was not charged with things that, or is not responsible for things that were done by past committees. Our goal tonight is to talk about the charge of this committee and this project that we're pushing for, not to go back and look at 2010 or look at past budgets. Our committee's not responsible for that, and we don't have that information. If you need that information or are looking for it, we'd ask that you go through the FOI process for the town hall and request it. We will gladly talk about any information related to the project that we're working on today. So, and then also, just, I would just ask that I will play mediator, you know, direct the questions to me, and then you will direct them off to the appropriate party, whoever that may be, to answer the question. We have Cindy in the back that will do finance, of course, Emmett's up at the table, Jim's here from a land use point of view. So there's a lot of folks in the room that have the expertise around their areas, so hopefully, we can ask, answer your questions. And if we can't tonight, I will promise you that we'll get you the answers back to you. So, if you could just, one other thing, state your name. So Ruth is taking minutes, just so that we have it on record.
My name is John Wolf. I have a question, two questions, but I would be extorting the school, we're about to have a mall. How it's going to look, because at one point in the past, you know, I know we're talking about what's happening right now, it was going to look like a park kind of area, it's going to look nice on the street, and I'm just concerned if it's just going to be a parking lot next to my house, the way, you know, because originally, they were going to keep it to one entrance on Wigwam, and then, do I have the entrance ready?
Yeah, so you see that the site plan is in there. So the goal is to make it, we will have islands in it. It will not be a flat giant parking lot, and I'll let David talk more, but the islands that are in the center will catch rain, run off, they serve a purpose. It will look nice. We are not looking to create, you know, a giant parking lot that's blacktop. But, you know, David, feel free to...
Yeah, so we can kind of go back to that slide, but, you know, purposely, there's, you're sensitive to the neighbors when you're doing any of our projects, and so that's why really that addition was brought up as close to that sort of corner of the building that's there. There is parking, and there's a pretty, there's a pretty decent buffer component that's there. You see the lines of trees?
I see the trees, but then I see extra parking on the other right-hand side of that, the jogging yard.
Over here. So this, this is grass.
Why are they grassed in there?
Yep.
You know, we tried to illustrate it so you can at least visually see, but that's all intended to be grass.
So in our budget, we actually have a, an alternate that we've talked about, if there's money left in the project to actually reinforce this parking with grass pavers that can be driven on, that will make it look, you know, more supportive and more solid. But it will be grass right now.
And that other sort of darker piece that's up there, that's really just illustrating the septic system location that's there. That is not intended to be a paved or a raised area or anything like that.
So that was my concern, how it looks in the water traffic, because that's on a hill. I mean, you go down towards it, you're looking at that entrance.
The distance is actually, DOT looked at that, okay, and we actually did adjust the distance a little further towards this, that direction in the plan. In the site distance, few work, a traffic engineer reviewed that, and that was, that was deemed acceptable.
Would there be a blinking light?
No, 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 yeah, no lights, no. They definitely did not want there to be a light, any blinking lights. They consider that to be more of a challenge than that. There's enough sightlines, and that's the good thing. You are sort of up at that apex of that hill, so you do actually get good sightlines and enough of a turning radius for in and out.
Well, we still be coming out proper, but I know when I backed out of my driveway, I just get there.
There won't be, there won't be any backing out of there.
And one of the things they did ask is where that turnaround was, as David talked about, the bus loop. You know, they were cutting back that a little bit to extend the sightline. That was a request of them. So there is a hundred and twenty-six parking spots on the blacktop here. So this, between this and this is what shows, this is only, I think, what, sixteen added on, David, fourteen or sixteen?
But you said that would be grass, so you'll make it...
It will be, yep. Our concern was if you have a large town meeting, or where you're using that meeting room in the center, or you have voting, we could use that grassy spot and park all of the poll workers and the workers for it out there so the public had more parking space. Was really what we were looking at. Question? Yes, sir. Do you say your name?
Jeff Frum. Actually, I actually had a question about the mold.
Yep.
My question, I guess, would be for Jared. He said part of the building is going to be destroyed, and so that part, I guess, is accounted for, the part that's being retained. He said as mold. Is that, is that based on any kind of quantitative testing, or just kind of a walkthrough assessment by you? And if there is significant amounts that needs to be abated, does that kind of change the impact of the construction timeframe and the budget, I guess?
Okay, so, so, the center section of the building where he said there was water intrusion, I walked through that area, there's no visible mold growth in there. There's not masses of amount of black mold throughout the building. What you do have is a lot of water intrusion, you have stained ceiling tiles, ceiling tiles have fallen to the ground in some areas, but those are all, that's the water damage, building materials, and they're all done. So they're not, not retaining any of the existing acoustic ceiling tiles or anything like that as part of the project. All of the water impacted materials will be removed from the building. So as far as a mold abatement, there really isn't a requirement to do like a large-scale mold abatement.
So any of those building materials, as I mentioned, that are lower level is being removed. So it's essentially, you know, that's being demolished, and we're really going down to the superstructure, which is non-forest type of materials. Some of those walls that are there that are either old glazed masonry blocks that don't, that don't inherently hold that mold anyway. And then even any of the plaster work that's been done is all being fully removed as part of that, whether it's part and parcel with the abatement component, with the asbestos abatement, or just demolition because of the mass reconfiguration that we're doing within the space. So, you know, the good news is the original building, actually, the envelope, you know, was in good condition because it was maintained, you know, at that point. It's the gray piece that really had more of the water damage that was, that was there. That's where the flat roofs were. The pitch roof actually, actually held and its envelope was retained pretty well. We are redoing the windows, we're fortifying the cavity, we're now temporary the space with new heating and cooling, and anything of those new walls that we're creating internally around the perimeter, we begin to encapsulate. So we're really going back to the bare bones and building within.
So it goes up now, it's an educated guess, and you guys are the experts. So it's not, we know there's, we can see, you can see it on the walls and spots.
And this is typical, how you address projects like this, is you do this through, it's not a quantification of X square feet. You begin to assess that through the demolition phase, and you have procedures in place to be able to address that, you know? And the asbestos is sort of the same way when you're doing that. We've done destructive testing, determined. If we were doing a partial renovation, you'd be more concerned because you're not sure what you're leaving. In this case, we really are gutting every component that's within the building, that of source materials that get harbaged, you know, that type of material. So we're cognizant of it, and there's a work plan to deal with it when we're in the middle of construction.
And, and our committee has made a commitment to our town employees who had the same question you did, and when we met with them, we have made the decision, we will do mold testing and verify there is no mold in there before we turn the building over. Charlie?
Charlie Dickinson. With respect to the gentleman's question regarding the mold, so basically, if there's water damage or water intrusion, or there's mold there, or there's damage to the, I think you called it the structure, the underlying structure, you're basically going to remove it and rebuild it? Is it safe to say that that's what's going to happen? So it'll be like an abatement as you're going along?
Yeah, exactly. We have, we're developing procedures in place. We removed the roof material, the decking underneath looks saturated, we're going to have a plan and allowance to remove that square footage and be prepared to do it in real time. So that's all, that's all taking place because you need to anticipate what you may hit during construction. So that's all been thought through on the documents, and it'll be part of, be part of really what Downs and our team is managing through construction.
Yeah, clearly, and we had the same amount of damage in the hail part as we had in the gray part, this would be a gigantic discussion for us. That hail part has held up so well. I, the school replaced all the windows in 2008. There is, you can walk that hail part there, the, the old section up front here, this entire part of the building, there's not a drip of water in that building anywhere. So we're very comfortable with that part, which is the part that will become the town offices in this section. Yes, I mean, this is, you could go in there and take a shower some days after a rainstorm. So it is clearly a mess, so. Question? Yes, sir.
Michelle, I have a question about the buildings that you're going to add to it, the outbuilding and the gray part. Is that going to be on slab puddings or like a basement type?
Okay, so the outbuilding? The outbuilding's a slab on, traditional slab on grade, slab, remember fully, conventionally built. The, because you could see the sort of pitch that's there, and I think that's what you're, it, it's a, it's an elevated slab, there's no basement, there's no crossface. So we're going to build foundation wall, we're going to infill up, and that's essentially a slab on grade.
Okay, so you don't have to blast through a...
No, well, there's no blasting because we're actually building above the floor, above the existing grade, so that's all, that's all infill.
All right, great, thanks.
And we did use, talk about David, if I'm wrong, but a portion of that space will be used to house a new water tank, right? We talked about...
Well, that's, that's under that sort of portion of that existing, of the existing piece that remains is...
So over here in this area.
But that's a basement part that's already there.
That's a basement part that's already there.
Terry?
There's been a lot of discussions back and forth the last couple of months at the meetings about the water and the wells replacing, using up there. You and I have talked about it. What happens when you finally get that, the wells up and running? Is there a plan in place to have it tested consistently before construction, after construction?
Yep, it, it's a, it will be a public water system. We will have to meet the DPH testing requirements, just like we do in any of the schools. It really falls on the same level of a public water system as that for ongoing testing. So we, we haven't done, as I told you, we haven't tested the water since 2008. It was tested several times a year when it was a school. All of those tests were very good. There was no, no, there's no reason to believe that the wells, there's any issue with the wells. We are going to have to, as part of construction, and getting approvals from the state to reuse the wells. I know there was an email David sent, we're going to have to show flows, and we're going to have to do some things to the state. So we're going to have to get the pumps up and running again in order to go through the state process. So we will make sure, obviously, if there's contamination in the wells, we need to know that. So there will be some testing as we go through that process. Jim, you want to add anything?
No, I mean, the wells, the wells are covered over sixty, over sixty years ago. They actually served that school with populations of three hundred to five hundred students and teachers successfully. I imagine the state probably started some sort of testing regimen in the seventies, and, you know, just ramped up the testing schedule from that point, from probably once a year to four or five times a year, and it's always been successful. We haven't done anything to change the outside of that school, nothing's happened around it. The hydrology hasn't changed, the construction around hasn't changed.
And none of the wells are in any vicinity of any of the out, underground tanks outside, so there's no reason to believe there anything's contaminated down. Or...
Yeah, what kind of heat are you going to have? I'm asking because we've got new geothermal, and I really like it, and it's, I know it costs the earth to put in, but it's pretty cheap to run.
Yeah, yeah. We are, we are propane served, it's going to be, your fuel source will be propane. Those are going to be tanks that will be buried out by the outbuilding, and there are individual split units that will be, as I mentioned earlier about the zoning of the building.
Charlie Marlin. Kind of tying to that a little bit with all the new technology for, for fuel efficiency and things like that, is, has anything been done yet to look at the operating costs? So now, we obviously have a smaller operating cost than the current town hall. Has, has something been defined as far as an estimate of what the operating costs are going to be for the new building? I know we have propane, it's very expensive, and it up to wigs with the market, so there's a lot of change with that. So can the, can we expect something in regards to operating costs? Because we're used to a certain budget right now for that, and I see that increasing potentially.
So if, if we meet the timeline that we're proposed to meet, half of the year will be an extra budget. So the town right now is in the budget process. So now that we've identified our fuel requirements or sources and know we're using propane and all of those things, electric, we'll work with David's firm and with Emma and Linda and Cindy and Ron to provide them the information and our estimated uses so that they can start looking at budgeting. That will be done as part of the normal budget process. Their operating expenses, it's not within the preview of our committee to, to provide or come up with operating expenses for the building, but we will clearly support what the town needs for information to be able to come up with those numbers to do it. So, I don't know, Emmett, you want to add anything, or Cindy, or Ron?
And then in regards of, to the town itself, will any of the town employees, like in the maintenance department or anything like that, be repurposed to do any type of work at all on this project, to remove materials? So they're, they're paid right now to do a specific town services, will they be repurposed at all to be doing any work up there outside of what the contractors do?
No, the contractors will be part of the demo contract. They have to be licensed to do demo, especially on the abatement side. They, they need to be licensed to do the abatement. So the work that, if it was a straight knockdown of a building, we might engage public works or somebody to do it, but with the fact that, that we're talking regulated ways to get out, it has to be separated, and the size of the project, we're going to have to hire a contractor.
This, this project is mandated through a few things. It's going to be preventium wage rates that mandated, it's also going to be CHRO, which is the Office of Civil, Civil Rights that comes into that. So this really needs to be managed, not only under the terms, but that labor component, but also liability of bringing in the skilled and the licensed professionals to do that work.
Hang on, Terry, we'll come back to you. Yes?
From the city. Have you ever thought of doing a new community style with those, just kind of just, I think, and stuff like that? Do you really like it?
So our committee did talk about it in the beginning, we had discussions around it. Because of the budget that we have, it's more expensive upfront to do. There's clearly a cost to do that upfront. We feel that we've created an economic system, we've looked at the propane, we've looked at zoning, we've provided the ability for us to shut down areas. So on Saturday, with parking wreck is the only thing in there, that's all we're going to heat and maintain. So we didn't feel that we could support doing solar or geothermal within our project and the budget that we were provided, but we were clearly looked to create the most efficient system, and that's where we look to, you know, Silver and Downs to provide us their thoughts between oil and gas and, and what our other options were.
The challenge with solar is that it's a twenty-year payback unless you're receiving incentivized grants through other state sources and this being the USDA funded. We combine other sources of funding, so typically municipalities are doing this through power purchase agreements and not buying and owning... So typically municipalities are doing this through power purchase agreements, and not buying and owning the solar panels is part of it. Because the cost of the solar panels, when you amortize that, it will be a twenty-year payback, and that really doesn't pay for it and the additional upfront cost. So for the small yield, and especially the building in terms of the roof area and square footage, it would yield you a very small percentage of overall consumption on a building this size. So solar doesn't actually provide you with that full payback, because you just don't have the area or the incentivification to do that. So what we've seen is most municipalities have in the future have come back into a power purchase agreement. If they don't own the solar, they're just buying it at a reduced rate.
I hate to put wet blankets on the thing, but you all know that. Now, let me ask you a question. What happens if cost starts up overrun dramatically?
So that's, we, right now, we are gonna have a GMP, so we're gonna have a locked-in price that our committee agrees on, and that's part of the reason-
Let's say all of a sudden, oh, we didn't see this was gonna happen, or we didn't know the Fed or the state was gonna drive us to the ground like a tent, eh?
So we, we, our committee has identified things, and we've already started to look at a value engineering process on things that we, we can pull back on and things that we can, um, to help reduce the cost. We, we brought it down to a reasonable number. We truly believe that once we have it, we're looking to go out to bid within two months, you know, and be locked into a price. So we'll have that guaranteed maximum price from a contractor-
You think the town can really afford fifteen million dollars for some building?
Uh, you know, this project was approved at referendum by our county a whole eight years ago.
I couldn't crush it 'cause we had health problems.
So, so, you know, it's not the committee's, it's not in the committee's realm to say, is the, can the town afford it? We were charged with pushing this project forward, and, um, that's what we're here to do tonight.
Alright, well, I run a betting caller in England, 'cause I'm not allowed to run it here. I wanna see a show of hands, anyone thinks that you'll get what you've shown here for the, you do. If you're gonna get it, or you know you won't get it?
I think we're gonna-
Yeah. Now, it, it just inconceivable that this small, little tower-to-be, small, little, beautiful touristy town needs this whole thing in the beginning. It's, it's just a snare-nic illusion. I was on this committee for five, six, or seven years, of which I see at least three members that were on it before. And, uh, I came to the conclusion this thing was a fraud then at nine million. Now it's jumped to fifteen million. And I knew that in well then, there would be many cost overruns, and I can guarantee it now. Now I'm running this betting caller, so I've got a hat, I will eat in front of all you people if you get everything you're shown here for fifteen million dollars.
Charlie, you got that on tape, right? Guys, I wanna see the hat. I wanna see that. So, Dick, I, I appreciate your comments, I really- The committee, your comments. You know, and we have, one of the commitments that we have made to ourselves as a group is that this project will not go over if we run it down.
Well, then the project could be diminished.
No, I, I don't think, we have ways that we can look to, to, and they will be things that the town, uh, people will never see if we had to do it.
And the other thing you people don't realize, you're vacating a wretched area downtown, and they think they're gonna turn it into stores and stuff with the traffic jam now? Can you imagine what it might be later? It's gonna blow cost housing.
So I, I think, so I think we have to look at this in two ways, right?
Right.
It, it is clearly down there, um, we have property down there that the town is gonna have to look at. Again, that's not part of our committee's charge to do it.
Yeah, I know, it's not part of your charge.
However, we need to build a town hall that's accessible for our residents at this point. It's not fair for people to have to climb two flights of stairs to go see the first alignment. Um, it's not fair for people, they can't get up to see-
You know how much stuff in life isn't there, like mold? Sometimes you're vacating mold, yeah. Mold is the very least rock you're gonna win.
Eight forty-five, I promise people we get it.
I got it wrong, and yet, the rest of my stuff.
That's right, I want a picture of that hat.
That's a rock, it goes everywhere.
I've got lots of hats. Uh, Candy Carl, and I'm here actually wearing a couple hats. Um, I'm gonna do my personal resident of East Haddon hat, and go, yes, yes, yes! It is so embarrassing that we don't already have this, and it's taken ten years. I go all over the state and all over the country, and the heartbeat of towns are community centers like this. That's what I see in us. And, and yes, it's small, and yes, it's great, but we owe that to the people who do the business of this town, to have them in a place where they're not dealing with reams of paper under their desks. This is not only accessible, this plan for the public, but it's also for the people that basically are our employees, who need to work in a nice space. So my kudos to the entire committee and all the people that worked on this, and, you know, love and kisses may shower all over you. Um, and yes, I do believe that you're gonna keep this to the fifteen million, and I certainly will give him the hat. So he did. Um, I have a couple of questions, again, from the personal side. Uh, are the tennis courts gonna be resurfaced with a tennis company as opposed to a pavement company?
So, it, right now, it's in our project as an alternate. Um, we hope to have money to do it, um, to be able to do it. We have looked at, um, a couple different companies, the town has looked at a couple different companies, Tiffany has. Um, yes, we would look to a tennis company, not- Part of the issue if you look at that, where the tennis courts sit today, is the rock, the hill off of the, it's washing out the courts from underneath. So we need to redesign that if we get to that point.
And I understand it's not a big deal, but for those of us who like outdoor recreation, we go to Depriver, we go to Essex, we go to Chester, and it'd be so fabulous to have it right there where it is now. So that would be great, I know it's not the most important thing. Um, I, it wasn't mentioned, but I see on this little rendering that the stage is still there?
Yep, so the stage is-
Oh, there you go, my kiss!
So, the stage is stayed, uh, it'll be part of the gym. Um, so right now, we are, um, looking, as far as the one area is the lighting, we're gonna revan, uh, look at the lighting and whether we can keep what's there, provide new power to it. There's some discussions the committee still needs to have around that, but this stage itself will remain unusable. So maybe we, you know, if the committee can't afford the lighting, maybe, uh, you know, it's something donation-driven or something to get it-
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll start the fundraiser. Uh, uh, to, can you tell I'm excited about this?
So that was to, to come back to you?
As a personal. Now, now I'm wearing another hat. Yeah, well, this is to the East Haddon Art League, and I will be, I'm the liaison with the East Haddon Art League and this municipal building. And the Art League has tapped me to let you all know, and I will be coming to the actual committee meeting as well, but we want to offer all of the artists, uh, that are members of the Art League, for art to beautify the building. So, um, we will be coming to the committee, I will be coming on behalf of the East Haddon Art League with all of the different sourcing, work-handling mechanisms and all that kind of stuff. Um, but we want to get the high school students' arts involved, as well as the East Haddon Art League members themselves. And to, so you'll have plenty of interior decorating available through the artists up here right there in the center.
Perfect, thank you.
Hi, Julie Anna Rana, and I, my question is about IT construction. I just wonder, I know it's usually a large part of the plan. Have we talked to an IT professional who's given us advice on what this is going to cost? Um, also, where did I actually get into the budget? I saw the construction budget, and then there was the other category where that actually is. And where is the climate-controlled server room on that plan? Just to be clear about that.
Sits right here, sits right in this room at the center of the building.
Okay, no worries.
So, uh, our IT, we have an IT department for the town and the school. Um, so Mark has been involved in the, the layout of the building and the equipment that'll go there. Um, he oversees all three schools and all the ITs within the schools. Um, you know, David's group also has IT consultants and professionals that have been involved in this. So, um, the budget, part of it is in the construction, and part of it is in the owner's cost. So we are-
Wiring and infrastructure is part of the construction component. The active electronics and call it the servers was, as we know, is going to be part of the FFE and, um, the sort of other costs that, that's how it's allocated right now. So designs are, designs are, are already built into the plans, and then once that's placed, then the technology component of the wall, those will be purchased through separate contracts.
So in that other category, in that broad category, that's already all been broken down into a particular line of-
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, and then those items will be most likely procured through state contract, which is already pre-existing contracts that are, that are in place for those type of equipment.
So we, we're built, you know, this is gonna be an attachment of the town's current IT structure. So, um, it's just a, a growing, so everything, um, you know, you can take your town on top and you can walk in this building, or you can walk in a school or the town hall, and we connect up to the wifi and everything else. So, um, it will continue to be part of that infrastructure.
And there's discussions of some things like a racks that may already exist that can be purposefully used. So that part, that part of the design discussion that are, that are happening.
And the security system for the building, can you tell us about that, and how it's affected the insurance and all?
Uh, so it really doesn't have a lot of effect, effective karma. Uh, they care more about the fire system that's in the building, uh, the fire alarm than they do about the security system. But we will have, um, within, we're designing this out, it will have card access on the entrances and exits. So we won't have to, if people are coming in for meetings, the town no longer will hand keys out that we can't get back. If you forget your card, if you lose it, we shut it off on you. Uh, it's not floating around. Um, the main office doors will have, into the areas will be card access. Um, you know, there'll be, um, some, um, notification alarms that can come out of the tax collector's office, out of other areas of the buil- building if there's an issue, to notify the police. Um, so we've built out, there'll be, uh, cameras appropriately located around the exterior of the building and in key areas inside the building, and we'll also have, um-
We also have-
A perimeter alarm, an intruish, an intrusion alarm, so when the building is empty, it will be alarmed.
And the police department is still there?
And, yeah. So I think this will add, you know, there've been many discussions around the skateboard park and all of that. So you will have people from the police to the fire marshal, emergency management, they'll be in and out of this building twenty-four solid. You know, it's gonna add to and create that environment, and the building is used, uh, unlike today, for sure. So, alright, we'll go back to, start with Terry.
Back to the question before, uh, Dave Eppert got up about using, um, town employees. There is a lot of garbage in that building. There is personal furniture, there is, along with the desks and everything that were left behind, there's also personal belongings, floor to ceiling.
So not anymore. It's not there anymore. We've cleared most of that out.
It's there for the last year or two, because it was there a year ago.
The sofas, there's a room-
There, there are stuff down in back, a lot of that actually belong, it was stuff that we allowed, um, the Lions, and who else is it? Well, there's two parts to this. One is the, the Lions use that building for their tag sale, but the second thing, right now, the town is using it for evictions. So when someone is evicted, the town has a requirement to store their stuff. It's being put in, in the building, um, as a storage place temporarily, because that building is still alarmed, so it's a secure building. Um, that's gonna stop, we're gonna have to come up with an alternative. But the stuff you see in there is gone after, what is it, when, the sixty days, and I, uh, withhold it?
Yeah, I mean, that's why we kinda, it's safe that the Lions looked at it when-
Yep, right.
For the stuff that they wanted, and the rest is lost to their time.
So that's-
Who's moving it though? Is it town employees who move it?
Yes, the town employees will move that stuff, absolutely. Yep.
Yeah, and there's money allocated, there's money in the budget to do-
We were counting on town employees, we have a budget lined up that's over there before any abatement demolition starts. We can have you loosen up in that building and take it out. So typically, if there's a, if there's an eviction in town and we don't get rid of it, the people don't collect it, we give it to the Lions, or we give it to an organization, and they use it for their, so it'll get offered up if they come take it. Um, then it's, they take it out, and we don't have to deal with it.
But then you have to open another storage, and stuff, so-
Right.
The old town hall.
Still working.
Sightlight, are there gonna be lights, or, uh, they, not late?
Yep, it's gonna do.
So there's, there's, there's sightlighting, okay, so there's some sight poles. Um, these are what we call full cutoff lights, so, and dark skylights, so there's no light that shines up. Um, and there's no light that shines over the property line. That's a zoning requirement. We needed to present a photometric plan that showed the light levels. Um, so it needs to be bright enough for, from a security perspective, but obviously not too bright. We're not lighting up like a car dealership. Um, so there is some pole lights to get out to those, to the parking area. And then there's building light that also has that full cutoff. We do have some light blockers in the plaza piece of it, where it's just too difficult to create light to throw that far out. Um, they're architectural in nature, so all the fixtures were submitted to your planning and zoning commission, so they were able to see the architectural look of that, uh, and the compliance of that. Those are all LED fixtures, the foot candles all are, um, or have a warmer color than this bright white that you see within the retail, um, environment. So lighting was, has been carefully designed, and that was all submitted and has been approved by the planning commission.
So it will be on twenty-four hours time?
No, there's a visibility through time clock, so that can be, that can be adjusted as, as needed. Yeah, and then, so that could be, you know, that could be managed through daylight systems and such through operations. It's not just a switch on and off.
First question, other than the USDA, what do you guys think is the biggest potential of the town that could occupy the building by December?
That's it. USDA, USDA, USDA. It really is our biggest fear. Um, you know, Downs is very confident in their construction timeline with this and going out to bid. Um, you know, the plans, we, we've had this set up, um, and had that construction schedule out and put together for a couple of months now. Um, we've met every target on it so far, you know, tomorrow being the turnover for the ninety-five, ninety-eight percent plans. So, you know, we're meeting that right along. So, um, you know, weather can always play into it. Uh, I think we have a really, um, bad spring, and it's, it's, uh, you know, we get a blizzard every weekend or something. It could clearly play into it, but I think, other than USDA, I'll add to it. We, we've already met with USDA, and we plan on continuing the process to make sure we eliminate any road block, roadblocks or hurdles that might be there. I mean, so, so we, town people proactive with you, we're, we understand the entire process.
There's money in the budget for contingencies, or the event, there's unforeseen.
There's, there's a good contingency built into the budget right now.
In the back. Uh, Kevin Staley, is this looking like, I know it's very early in the project, is it looking like it's gonna be projected tax burden neutral or tax burden minimal increase in terms of we are, we have our existing space, we're vacating that, moving in here, it's a little bit bigger, so more heat, more electricity, et cetera. But we're also, we've got some savings from Board of Ed moving out of the building that they're coming into. So what are we, what are we kinda looking at? I know the loan is gonna have a little bit of a, of an interest on it, so, yeah.
Cindy?
Sure. The Board of Finance established a debt service plan at the outset, and we have, we had two point five million dollars in reserves. And the Board of Finance took a resolve of as we retired old debt service, we would put the remainder in the bank. So as of this current fiscal year, we have three point three million dollars in the bank to offset the debt service. And the whole entire goal of the Board of Finance is that there would not be a tax increase for the debt service for this building. Now, we didn't learn, so that part will be totally neutral, and, and structuring of it as they did will maintain our high bond rating, and will be, is perceived very, um, as good prudent business in issuing debt by the rating agencies. And just a quick dovetail, and we keep talking about the USDA. The USDA has given us a fixed interest rate of three point six two five percent. We are also monitoring going out and issuing debt in the bond market. We have that option as well. So we are going to do whatever's the most cost-effective for the town. So the USDA can be obtained, as Craig has alluded to, but it's a nice insurance plan for us that we know that we are three point six two five. And if they reduce their rate, we benefit on the reduced rate. If they increase their rate, we're still at three point six two five percent. So we are watching that very carefully, and all of our modeling we did in putting together the debt of that four percent. So we're feeling pretty confident that we have poised ourselves through this plan to not- So we're feeling pretty confident that we have poised ourselves through this plan to not have a tax increase for the debt service. Yay.
So, so I think, Kevin, your, another part of your question, I don't think we are currently prepared to talk about the operating side of it. Um, we don't have enough information as we go through the budget process, like I said, we will be able to present that. Or, or, you know, Emmett and him, uh, from the selection side will be able to present that. We know there's cost savings from kinda mothballing the buildings down there and coming out of the Board of Ed where we pay $40,000 a year in rent. So there, there are things that are gonna turn, but we're also running a building that's gonna have probably 16 hours of use a day, which is good. That's what we want. We want a building that folks are using the gymnasium, they're coming to meetings there. So, um, I, I can't, I don't think I could talk to that for you.
Uh, I know you have the 15 million cap, so you, obviously you can't over, go, go over that cap. And I've been going through the meetings and there's been a lot of talk about value engineering. So value engineering in, in some ways, in, in, in simple terms could also be robbing Peter to pay Paul. So you might not have as many trees outside or you might have to do something different. So you have to cut one thing in order to do for another thing. So you might get unexpected costs maybe from the wells, maybe it turns out you have to drill another well or whatever. So, uh, but we've gotta stay within that 15 million dollars. With your current plan right now, like what you're showing us is what we can expect. So what we're seeing on here, even using value engineering, how much deviation from the plan do you see, uh, be, because of that?
So I don't see deviation to the plan. I think when we talked value engineering, we started talking, um, we would like to do different color or different, uh, grades of carpet throughout the building. So different areas are broken out. We could cut costs by using one run of carpet in the whole entire building. So there's a value engineering, um, option, just as an example. And I'll let David add to it or Paul add to it. And we came up with 12 things and I don't honestly remember them off the top of my head tonight.
We, we already went through a value engineering process and looked at some of the corners of the building, what could be changed without affecting the aesthetics or, or look of the building. Uh, are the items, uh, I, not just like, we'll do what they all were, but I'd say if they were 12, 13 items, we'd probably accepted half of them and the other half we rejected. We wanted to do that now instead of doing it down the road.
So that's already. So it was a huge cost savings for us from going from a nine-foot door to an eight-foot door or a seven-foot. It was a gigantic savings. So those were things that were no brainers for the committee. The rest of them were things that we as a group said, we would prefer not to take these on now. Um, we, you know, not that it'll, it won't affect the program of the building, but let's look at it, let's see where our numbers come out and then we'll come back and revisit. Uh, and we might need to look for other things too. And we, I, I don't know, we're very comfortable with the numbers today and we're hoping that they come back and, and we'll know within, um, basically a month and a half, really. We should have bids, or two months, we should have bids back.
Yeah, the reality is, uh, uh, a project of this scale, um, is that, um, you gather the right team to work together. And to put together a plan that you could put together an estimate. And you go out to bid and you let the market speak for itself and you begin to lock into a price. And you'll begin to go from there and make sure that you are putting together safeguards through contingency and that's what's outlined at the moment. So, uh, I, I think there's a strong plan that's here, there's a good team that's, that's working and a committee that's looking over every component of that. And through this process, you've gone through the value engineering, the approach of looking to value engineering at the end. Uh, and you're gonna take 10 steps backwards to go two steps forward. We've already sort of made those steps throughout, throughout the process. So, um, the market will eventually speak for itself, but, um, but I think that the estimating and the plan is in place.
So I think the other thing that makes us feel a lot more comfortable is, um, we're actually working off, you know, Downs is now gonna be going on their third review of the budget. We also, as part of the process to get to this point, had a, a completely different construction firm, O N G, who put a budget together for us, which was, um, under the 15 million mark. We hired a consulting firm who does nothing but budgeting on projects, um, gives some construction. They put a budget together that was under 15 million. And all of them had to get to that number, um, even though they were done over a year ago, a year and a half ago, they had the escalation in there. Um, to cover the cost and the, the increase in, uh, construction costs. So, um, we're very comfortable that we can do this and provide an awesome town hall, um, for the money.
And then what's the post warranty period? So once you deliver, you hand it over to the owner and something goes wrong? So.
Typically one year.
Is it, is there, um, is there bonding, is there any type of protection on, how soon, or is like the bond release from the, the, the contractors and things like that? So just so, so we're protected, so we're, there's no surprises, like it happened in Hebrew, they built the new brand school and then the floor bubbled up. And, uh, and that cost, they didn't go back on the taxpayers because they had cut the, they had cut their lease, the, the builder. And so the townspeople became responsible for that. So as long as there's protections from, uh, you know, concrete construction.
There will be a punch, you know, there will be a punchless process that we go through, um, to make sure that the work is to our standard, to, to, um, Silver Petrocelli standard. On all of the mechanical side, we will hire a, a commissioning firm, um, that comes in as a, um, totally independent contractor to commission all the mechanicals. To make sure that the H A C is actually doing what we're saying that it's gonna do. Um, and it's, it's cooling the room to the standards that we, that it's supposed to, heating the room. So, um, you know, we won't sign off and take possession of things until all of the, our ducks are in a row. And, and once we, that substantial completion happens, then we sign off and we'll have that year warranty for that.
Downs has been in business for 83 years. To quote my boss, we're never gonna go away. Um, we're bonded, we're bonded, all the major contractors, almost everybody still be bonded, that is good for the first year. If there's a problem after that, we'll be around to help resolve, resolve that problem.
So we did, uh, just to add to that, as part of our interview process with Downs, we checked our references. Um, we called a lot of people for all of these folks and, and everyone said exactly that. Um, Downs has stood behind all of their work. You know, if we had little, little things that we needed to have addressed, they were here to do it for us, so, um.
Charles Austin, now it's an unknown who's going to come in with the lowest bid.
So it's more than just a low bid. Um, so you guys are breaking it out and you can talk to it.
There, there, there'll be a, in a bid documents, we're, we're not obligated to use the lowest bidder.
We're not?
No, we're not. However, we have to show good reason as to why and why not. Um, we prefer to use the lowest bidder, but they have to be able to perform and do, do what's expected.
Well, what I notice time again, what typically happens is, you know, a contractor will put in bid and scrape it to the bare bones so that they get it because it's the lowest bid. And then they know that they don't have any limits as far as what they charge for change orders. So they're anticipating, let me finish. So they're anticipating that change orders will be where they can make up the difference. And if a school is as well-designed as you say it is, ideally there should not be change orders. So then what is going to happen when the contractor finds out that, gee, I really underbid this and there haven't been change orders? And so all of a sudden he's, um, starting to cut corners and make things cheaper.
Our responsibility, our first task is to make sure nobody's cutting going is, is, is plan, it's set, plans, the specifications. My superintendent and our project manager will make sure it's built according to the plan's specifications.
And you also make sure that you're not gonna be doing change orders? And do the contractors know that?
On a job like this, there will be change orders. There's no, there's in buts, there will be change orders. But in a, in a documents, the s, the percentages that the contractors allow for marketing fees are all stipulated in the contracts. We make sure that there's a limit to how much they can charge for, for fees. And our job is we've gone through the first budget, the second budget and, and the third budget is to review the documents for all constructability and pass it on to the architect. So that we can eliminate almost everything you could conceivably see during the design, during the design and drawing process.
So you're saying you can put a limit on what they can charge for the change orders?
For market, for mockups, yes.
And.
And we, we also ask for hourly rates, we get all this into our bid documents so that we have everything spelled out before anyone's hiding. And, and what's happened, let's see, you get a little bidder and his hourly rate for a partner is $80 and everybody else is at $60. Then we, before he signs that contract, we negotiate that $80 down to the same rate that everyone else is carrying. So we, we, we go through.
Well, how can he be the lowest bidder if he's paying his people?
There's a difference in what you, you bid and what you include for rates for.
For extra work.
For extra work.
Oh, that's what you're saying, for extra work and charging. Um, my second question is, um, what were the comparables? Did you run the numbers, what it would cost to start from scratch with a rebuilding? So you would probably roll the shoes and all the other things that you possibly go on?
So that, that was not a charge of our committee to do. Uh, that was done by previous committees. Um, there were several discussions around that.
And which came out to be the more cost-effective?
I honestly, it, the doing and keeping, we have a structure there that is sound. Um, if, we were gonna get from a square footage point of view, it was much more cost-effective for us to run it.
By, by how much? You mean we have numbers to substantiate that?
And David, you remember numbers. It would have been, we would have been building a 14,000 square foot town hall for similar numbers.
Well, you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily have to build as much space. I mean, you're making use of what space is there, but for the town's needs, could you see the way you've been in a smaller building?
So we're, we're, we're at $269 a square foot right now. And new construction is, um, the state of Connecticut looks at the average of about $450 a square foot as the threshold for whether it's more economical to renovate versus build new. So we are, we are, we are well, well below that, a hundred dollars a square foot on that.
The other thing that drove it was if we knocked the building down, we were gonna lose the gym. You know, the gym would go away if you totally leveled it and started building it. And we, uh, no one in the town, it would never believe that that was a good idea. At any town meeting, any public area that we went to, uh, the consensus never, never believed that that was a good idea, so.
Well, it's just that nothing had been said, or at least nowhere could I find any reference to making the cost comparisons, et cetera. And it's nice to have figures, you know, the numbers, so that substantiates that this is more cost-effective.
And, and, um, you know, as Dick ever said, this has been, uh, started in 2007. So I know we did those when or where, we'd have to go back and look to see. Uh, that was something I think O N G put together for us at one point, um, in numbers, so. Uh, again, our committee wasn't charged with going back to look at that because it had already been done and discussed. So.
I have one more question about, um, I have one more question about the water. Was the water, does water have, in the middle school, did it have filtration or was it straight from the well?
Actually, it was a little bit of a straight from the well.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we'll see.
We hope. So Linda?
Can you speak to the people and explain the benefits of the F F and E that we have already received?
Um, sure, so we have, uh, one of the things the committee was a little nervous about was in the funding of, uh, what kind of furniture and how much furniture we would have to move from the town, current town hall and the current offices that we use. Um, so we've been very fortunate, we've, uh, received a donation of, uh, all of the furniture for doing the town hall. So, um, it's, it's a lot, it's some nice stuff, we'll have all of the offices. Um, so there are demountable walls, cubes for every office, so everything in the town hall will match. Um, we have several filing cabinets, there, there might be need to buy a couple of additional filing cabinets that fit into the right little nook, um, versus having big four and five drawers. But, um, you know, there will be a cost with refitting it, in which we built into the budget. But, um, you know, David's group, when it was, um, donated to us and we, we were able to bring it in, it was all inventoried and, um, we know the parts. We're working with a vendor to be able to reassemble it and put it back together and fit it into the spaces that it needs to fit. So.
What would you estimate the value of that donation to be if we were to purchase it?
If you were to purchase it new, it's over a million dollars for the furniture that was donated.
Donated?
Uh, it was a, uh, anonymous donation, we'll call it.
But this is, this is used furniture, you're saying it's not?
It is, uh, so the furniture was in an office building that had been installed and it was in a suite that, um, about 90% of it was really never used. They, and they moved out of the office building and had to clear it out. So, uh, the committee looked at it and we felt it, it made sense. It cost us to date $38,000 to move a million dollars worth of furniture and get it here and have it, so.
Thank you.
Todd Elston, um, as far as, uh, we talked a little bit, uh, with the lighting, could you please clarify what's gonna be done to minimize the impact on the neighbors in regards to lighting, drainage, traffic, et cetera? Particularly drainage, the water comes off those parking lots, where does it go? If not in the middle yard, I hope. Uh, and also lighting, now I know it's, it's important to have lighting for security, lighting for safety. But when the building is not being used, like in the middle of night, the light's gonna stay in all night, not shining in the neighbors' windows. So I heard down lighting, uh, dark skylight is good, but could you, for that layout, could you point out where the night lighting, the minimal night lighting is going to be so the neighbors can appreciate what they're gonna see?
So I, I would let David talk to the lighting and the drainage. Um, one thing I will add that the committee chose or decided was, um, on this wall back here, we're putting in a privacy fence along this back driveway here to divide off the skateboard from the adjacent neighbors that are right next door. Um, you know, those, um, the skateboard park, the kids are there, um, they make a lot of noise. There's a lot of clicking and banging of skateboards and stuff. So we felt that it was important as part of the project to help, um, minimize some of that noise for them. So when you talk about stuff we've done to work with the neighbors, that's one thing that we've done. Um, and then additionally maintaining the, the tree lines and stuff. But David can talk to lighting and drainage.
So drainage, we, um, we have what's called bio swells that are worked throughout. They're really inverted planters, um, that allow for water to come off the sheet flow of the parking. It begins to slow that down, it gets naturally filtered and then the sheet flow begins to work itself around the swelling. That was all, uh, part of the submission and approval, uh, in review, we're in the planning zone. And as I mentioned earlier, the, uh, the sight lighting, the pole lighting, which is, are, they have architectural look to it. They're not just simply shoebox light fixtures. Those are dark sky compliant, meaning that the light doesn't shine up. The ones that are close to the property lines are shielded to the back and they also shield itself down. In terms of the controls, there's time clock, so it's being able to be manipulated and programmed and so forth as users learn to use that building. So it's not simply on a switch that goes on and turn it off or don't turn it off, but forget about it. Um, there is perimeter building lighting, the building mounted, there's some, uh, there's some bollard lighting, which is low lighting to create at least at that four-foot and down surface. And, uh, that again is also, it is part of planning and zoning that we're even through. So they're located and positioned, you know, throughout, throughout the site.
Okay, so simply said, there will be no lighting leaving the perimeter of the property.
Yes.
So the folks that live on the, next door will not have light shutting on their windows.
There is no light that will, there is no light that will trespass the property line.
Okay, thank you. But the drainage, that's all, the same thing for the drainage, it won't go to the neighbor, it was downhill from here.
Correct.
It's self, it's self-absorbed on the property. Interesting, okay. I have one more question and a lot too, right?
Yep.
One more question. Um, and, uh, uh, tell me the difference, I'm a little confused. Tell me the difference between value engineering and a 10% contingency. The question is, to clarify, are you gonna use value, if you run into trouble cost-wise, are you then gonna use value engineering again? And if, or are you gonna use a dollar amount of contingency?
Without a contingency building for the project.
As, as we go through the next budget process, we will look at the drawings, see if there's any recommended, and I don't like to term value engineering to start with, but value.
Use what?
Value management, value management as we call it. And we'll sit down with the architect and discuss different constructability approaches and what may be a more economical way to do something, achieve the same, same product, same outlook. So we'll do that one more time. The contingencies, as they're set right now, this. The contingencies, as they're set right now, there's an owner's contingency. There'll be a construction manager's contingency. And there's one more contingency that you see in the handout, there's three contingencies. Right now they cover about 10%. After, as we go out to bid, they'll probably be down from 10 to about 7.5%. And afterward, done bidding, they'll be reduced even further. The owner has a contingency and the construction manager's allowed a contingency of 3%. That'll be the, what's not, if we develop a GMP. And the intent is, I mean, the owner's contingency covers out scope changes, our contingency covers in scope changes. A job like this, that, there's no reason why we'd spend, I mean, you never know because of the evacuation process, because of the fact it's a renovation of an old building. There's, there's things that you're gonna find that you try to uncover during the process, but sometimes you just can't get to them. You can't get to the stuff till you start to knock the building down, tear, tear components of the building out. But typically in a project like this, we probably return 75% of the contingencies. But that's, that's historically what we've been able to achieve.
So 100% of any contingency not spent on the construction side is back to the town?
Yep.
So.
Thank you.
Any other?
Karen, I just have a comment. I just wanna thank all of the committee members for all of their time and effort and hundreds and hundreds of hours for seeing this project work. And I want to thank that group.
We have a very good group, we, we work well together, we pick early, fight later, but we keep each other in line to moving forward, so. Tom Mark?
One more question, the vault?
Yep.
Is the vault gonna be steel or concrete?
Concrete.
Does that comply?
Pre-fabricated, have a modular vault.
Does that comply with the state recommendations for record-keeping?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, I hope we answered everybody's questions. I hope, again, feel free, please come out, come to our meetings, email. So thank you for coming out.